To keep a big picture, these are kind of the other things. Another thing I wanted to say about the sales and stuff that you referred to is one thing that I wish we could do a better job of is establishing new cultural and social norms for people who move to Florida because now you're Floridian. You're in Florida. You're from somewhere else, but you're here now. And the things that worked wherever you're from are not the same thing in Florida. It's a different animal. It's a different place. And so if we could kind of embrace being a Floridian, embrace some of the things that make Florida Florida, and understand that this is an ecosystem that is like none other in the country, you know, maybe that would go, you know, a long way toward helping maybe people embrace a little bit more of the stuff that we need to keep our system functioning right. So, thank you.
When you have Northerners buying $150,000 golf course lake lots, they don't want to see that.
Well...
That's the problem. And they're being sold by realtors that way. That makes it even worse.
Well, yeah, I totally understand that, but as a community, you're all obviously a community that's concerned about this, so it, you know, this is a, this is, you know, kind of a...
Thirty years ago, that's the problem.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's a matter of re-education, too.
It is.
But I think they did a good job in Pelican Preserve. They just, they, you know...
And we spend a lot of time doing that, but it's kind of a groundswell, you know, it's a diffusion of innovations thing, a diffusion of ideas, so, you know, you know it, you know it, you know it. And I know it's difficult. People keep moving here, and there's a new wave, and a new wave, and a new wave, and you feel like you're never gonna... Trust me, you feel like you're never gonna get there. But we can keep trying, and it sounds like you guys have a lot of good thoughts.
I know in my community, it took a long time to convince people these weren't recreational lakes, they were stormwater ponds.
They're for treatment. They're for stormwater treatment.
For fill.
Yeah, it's for fill. And that's what, now it's treating your water quality. It's running off your driveways and your lawns. Yeah, they're deemed stormwater. They're treatment plants, so to speak. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wonder if I could, if we could move to the next step, maybe bring this stuff up for some formal suggestions at another board meeting on how to address this, and I'll get feedback from the different board members, and that way we can get input from the different HOAs and community members. And I also wanted to greatly thank folks that are in attendance today for taking their time from their jobs and coming down here and having this discussion and educating us, and allowing us to ask these questions and get some different viewpoints. I did have one speaker, Avery, wanted to get up and make a statement, too, but I think his time might be better spent at one of the board meetings where they're actually making, where we're making decisions or looking at changing some policies, unless the chair wants to hear what Avery has to say.
But we can't make a motion in this session, session anyway.
That's right.
So at the next session, there's nothing wrong with making a motion to take an action at this point in time, because we have confusion, as it exists right now, with that addendum that was never approved before. We need to get a resolution of that. I'm ready to make a motion on that.
Bring it up.
At the next meeting, though.
Bring it up as an agenda item, and take the...
After four o'clock.
Make a decision.
Well, it's, this was just for informational purposes only. We weren't planning on making any kind of, there was no vote on this. So this would come back at a different board meeting, is what Chris is saying, not today.
Right.
Right.
I think what's important is that it's not on the agenda. I think there's a tremendous concern in the communities, evidence will have, especially the board may want to consider. The board is free to add it to the agenda today when we get to the role of board meeting, business section, but that may be why the board may be inclined to say the next meeting to get the public a call out here.
Well, while we're in a workshop environment, and it is great hearing the speaker speak, but I think ultimately, if we look at the addendum or the policy that was being created back in 2016 to speak to laterals when the DO was silent and it was never ratified or voted on, that's the issue at hand, is we have in our pond standard the 25% for attention to the DO where laterals are called out, and I think we either had been adhering to it or it is our direction to adhere to it in the future. I think what I would like to hear from the board is what we feel we should do when the DO was silent, and whether that's being retroactive to possibly already worked on, or at least our philosophy moving forward, because if you look at your estimates from a couple of years ago, $20 million that, you know, we have estimated to spend on ponds, if we don't have solutions in place to help maintain the erosion, future erosion and water quality in all the ponds, then we're not being diligent in our solutions. So I have no problem with it. And when I read through it, it seemed like to me if the DO was silent and our standards called for a certain percentage, then that's what our, that's what our standard is. And that's the way I would interpret it. So the policy that was being drafted around what to do when a DO is silent, that more so, some of it was speaking to the removal, but I think ultimately, we need to maybe all voice our opinions on, do we feel like all ponds should have a minimum of 25% laterals? Or if the DO states more than that? And what is our stance when that, the laterals expand past a 25%? At what point would we consider a removal? Is that at 30%, 40%, or is it just at the request of the homeowner and the HOA?
Well, at the meeting that we had with, in particular Hampton Park, the issue was this addendum that came out that I wasn't aware of, that Chris brought out. The problem we've got on that is we're bringing a party, a third party into this that really doesn't want to be involved in this, and that's the HOA. My issue is that if a property owner, a single property owner, or a group of property owners have laterals in their property that are not required by the DO, they should be able to come to this board individually so that we can make a decision on it to authorize staff to authorize our vendor to remove them. That simple.
Right.
Madam Chairman, it's not simple at all. And we, the board that was sitting several years ago, spent a lot of time talking about this, and one of the reasons that the board didn't vote on the item that you were speaking to, Ms. Banks, is that we didn't want to get into a legal difficulty with HOAs or annual individual property owners that didn't want laterals on their property. And so what we were trying to do, we were trying to split the baby and let everybody know how the board that was sitting at that time felt, but not put it into regulations.
Yeah, and I do understand that at that point in time, it was more about removal.
Yes.
And I still think that's a topic that's, you know, relative today, but I also think there's another side that is equally as important, is implementing laterals where there are none, based on our standards to, to, you know, better, you know, equip or maintain our lakes for future stability. So I think it's, I can see, there's two split issues, and I absolutely understand the removal piece, but...
Well, and I'd just like to point out that in March of 2018, because plants were removed in Hampton Park, there was a letter of noncompliance from the county that came out, and the laterals had to be replanted. And my understanding is that was done by Lennar, that was before turnover, and now some of those plantings have been removed again, so...
It's because those plants, we're not talking about plants that were outside the DO, we're talking about plants that were inside the DO. Those is what were removed, and I would totally agree. That's a no-no. And I don't think there's anybody, I haven't heard anybody in the community complain about or threaten anything on removing laterals that are DO written. Nobody's asking for that. It's where they're not covered by a DO that people do not want them.
And I think that, I think the decision that the board needs to make is, first off, the addendum that was written a long time ago was, it didn't have individual property owner in it at all. You can see that that was lined through and changed, and I think with the number of people that live on lakes, if you allow each and every individual homeowner to come in and decide how the board's going to maintain the lakes for erosion and water quality, we're opening up a can of worms that for staff will be a nightmare.
But HOAs have no authority on this. They don't have the dog in this fight.
They think they do.
Well, I think at that point, the property owner is the, I mean, for all intents and purposes, they're the plaintiff, or they're the ones that had the issue.
The lake property owner is us. We are the property owner of the lake.
Right, but the HOA wouldn't say, "We have a problem here," because it, you know, I still think HOA needs to be involved at some point, but it would be, if the property owner, that would be the one with the issue. HOA would not come just organically and say, "Hey, I have an issue with laterals," unless it was a collective, like maybe there's five or six.
Well, the first thing, for example, we put, "The HOA or Property Owner Association, in parentheses, requester, will provide the development order." That's not their job. That's our job. We should have the development order for each and every community within Gateway. That's not an HOA's responsibility. That's ours. And what we should be doing is if these property owners individually have a problem, let them come before this board and argue their case. Our staff will tell us whether it's in a development order or it's not in a development order. Can we make a decision?
Well, and it's not only that. I think it's going to be difficult to come up with anything more defined than, you know, if there is an issue, we will have to account for that individually, because there are certain lakes that, based on maybe current conditions, require more than a 25%. So, and when you have that growth...
Darn it. Darn it.
There aren't any what?
Yeah. The maximum requirement in all of the Gateway Development Orders is 25%.
No, no, no.
There's no maximum requirement.
No, I know. If you guys let me, you let me finish for a second. If the minimum is 25%, if there are lakes hypothetically that have had erosions, historically have erosion, maybe some water quality issues, and those laterals have expanded to 35%, 40%, we, our staff would have to make a decision on removing those laterals. Would that have negative impact to the lake? If it's not in the best interest of the district in maintaining the lakes, even if it's in excess of 25%, 35%, I think we would have to agree that those laterals are needed and we would not grant the removal. Just hypothetically, that's where we would say, "Hey, the DO might say 25. It has grown past that. It is what is required by the lake at this particular time." But if the water quality's fine, and there's no impact to the lake banks or any history, then I could see we would probably grant that removal. But it's not, it has to be a case by case. That's my whole point.
Mrs. Swerden?
Well, I agree with Mr. Banks. However, we are responsible for the maintenance of the ponds, and I think if we feel that the laterals are necessary to maintain them, that should be our decision. Because that's, when a person buys property on a pond, they're not buying the pond.
Exactly.
Okay? And we have to maintain them. And if we need laterals to maintain them, then that's it. And if a person, a resident, takes the laterals out, then they should have to pay to put them back in, if we feel it's necessary to have them. That's, because we maintain them.
And I actually read through, I completely read through all the lateral standards again. It's been a while since I had actually reviewed them, and I'm not ready to make a motion on this or vote on it, because I think this needs work. I don't think this is ready to be vogue on.
The policy.
I think the policy, even the, even the standards themselves, I've been questioning a couple lines in them. I think that this needs to come back. I think if, if we were to remove...
You mean the pond standards itself?
Yeah, there's a couple of lines in it that...
You didn't say anything when I authored it two years ago.
Ed, I understand that, but in retrospect, reading this again, and we're having all these issues with the lake banks, there's, you know, there's some tweaking here that would benefit, would benefit us. And I think that instead of making an addendum, we should incorporate the language of an addendum right into the pond standards so that there's not this addendum floating out there. It's part of the document.
And I don't think there's anything wrong with looking at a standard two years after, you know, just to see if there's updates and incorporate this removal process.
I said we could make an amendment to, instead of that, we could make an amendment.
Yeah.
I think we just rewrite the standards and incorporate it.
Yeah, we update the standard.
We'll update the standard.
Yeah, update the standard, same.
Absolutely.
But I think that, and I went back and reread it as well, I think that what it does not have is the, is really what the policy was speaking to, is the removal. And I don't know if I completely agree with everything that's in the removal policy now, so I think if we go through it as an action for the board, go through it, if we redline it or put some comments, feed it to Chris...
Well, I thought that's what Chris did. What Chris put in the board book, I thought, was a proposed revision to this.
And that was from the previous meeting, the comments that were made. We just put it under draft hour.
So I think if we go back and look at those, and just, if we have any comments or updates, get them back to Chris, and let Chris come back with a revised pond.
What I would suggest is to, if you're going to have the comments, have them in a public session, so we don't have any issues or anybody...
We can bring them back.
That's what the comments you made, in a public session.
Well, but...
Well, that's... You're going to do that. They're holding us at another deal. Because if you're going to talk about making the changes that you suggested, you're going to have a room full.
Going to have a what?
You're going to have a room full.
A room full.
Yeah. If there's any hint that you're going to be adopting a pond's policy of this organization that ignores the development order and says, "We're going 25% regardless of what the development order says," they're having this in down there at the legal arena.
But is that the understanding that it's not ignoring the DO, from what I understand from our representatives here? The DO just doesn't call out laterals as a requirement. It does not.
And people bought, people bought based on that, Doug. That's the problem. People purchased $100,000 and more lots on that basis.
Based on the fact that there's no laterals on the draw.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's just, from my position, it's how we interpret...
Well, my thing is, I follow the county's 10-4-18, and I was hesitating bringing it up, but I'll bring it up. 10-4-18, and I want to read this. Whenever possible, the PLS must be located away from residential lots to avoid maintenance aesthetic conflicts with residential users.
I'll speak to that as far as that requirement. Keep in mind that your development, at the time that it was developed, that code has changed. We no longer allow the LME on private property. The LME is part of the lake tract. So in other words, your property owner...
All of ours speak that.
No. No, not at all. Your LME is on private property. The current code, the LMEs cannot be on private property. So the legal sketch and description of your portion of property that you purchased today, 2018, 2019, sorry, 2019, the LME is not in the rear of your property. That LME is part of the lake bank tract. If you purchased in 2013, 2011, you have a 20-foot LME in the rear of your property. So that code has changed. I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of that.
I'm glad you brought this up. This is news.
Okay? There is an easement.
We have four, we have four ponds, I don't know what the dates were on ponds one through 10 in Hampton Park.
I believe on 11, 12, 13, and 14, which is part of the New Hampton Lake, which is the most recent that you guys have developed, those do not have the lake maintenance tract, so you have your control elevation, your 20 feet, okay, is all Gateway CDD-owned property. Then it's owned by the private property owner. If you're looking at Lake Three, that control elevation is where it starts, your property line.
Correct, if you go back 20 feet.
Yes. Jane Doe owns that piece of property from the control elevation, okay, to your PUE out in the right-of-way, so your public utility easement out to your right-of-way. That is owned by Jane Doe. The 20 feet in the rear, and it does dip, it's different depending on where you are. Some of the properties have 20 feet, some of them have 15 feet, depends on when it was developed. If it was developed in 1994 or 1995...
What do you think the year was?
Say again?
What do you think the year was that this came?
I don't know, Ed. I do apologize. As far as the changing from the 20-foot in the rear...
Isn't that 2012?
2012.
2012 is when it started. I don't believe it was modified until 2013, but I may be wrong.
Who's then, this adds a whole new foggy... If that's the case, who maintains that 20 feet?
You do. You own the...
Our CDD's not maintaining that. Each individual property owner's maintaining that.
Well, maintaining...
Well, it's just like a PUE.
Mowing the grass.
Well, that's different than maintaining for purposes of lake maintenance.
Who mows the grass?
There's a difference between maintaining, I'm a property owner. I own the fee simple title to a tract of land. The last 20 feet of it is encumbered by an easement favored some entity.
No, she didn't, she didn't say that. That's not what she said. I can finish that.
Old standard, okay? The, the last 20 feet, the LME is on the private property. The owner of that fee simple lot, that is the servient estate, okay? It is encumbered by the dominant estate, which is the easement, and that property owner can't interfere with that easement. The property owner, he might have grass on there, but they can interfere with the ability of the easement holder to use it for lake maintenance purposes, maintenance access purposes, drainage purposes. We don't have to maintain it.
I understand all that, Tommy. I'm talking about the one she just introduced, that the 20 feet that before was an LME on my deed, my land, past 20 feet. Now, it's not even my property. That 20 feet is, is in the CDD's property. My question is, who mows the grass?
The property owner.
The property, this is, this is the problem.
Okay, Doug.
No, hang on. If you want to know what's going on out here, you're going to have to pull the plats. The plats are the legal document that's recorded at the clerk records. They're signed. That's what you have to do. This is the problem with laterals being mowed down. This is why the county changed the code to say that your individual LME has to be in its own tract on the plat, and has to have a dedication for maintenance on the plat. Before 2013, the LME was on my property. I had to pay my guy to mow it, or I had to mow it. And then what happened was, while he's out there mowing it, I say, "I'm going to give you $100 cash, go out there and spray those weeds out there in the lake." County had immense amount of problems. As a result, we have escarpment, like I talked about, sloughing off of slopes. We're dealing with all of this now. We changed the code. And the reason we changed the code is because residents can't handle having responsibility of that LME, and we have to make sure it's in its own tract with a maintenance entity for compliance issues, because they were overstepping their bounds. So it's just like a PUE, Jess was just saying, it's just like a PUE. I gotta, I have an easement that runs five feet on the one side of my, my property. I have plants in it, but if they want to come in and mow them down, that's up to them.
I understand all that uneasement, but I now see, I've got 11 through 14, and it does appear, but I've got to check now the plat. And I'm assuming that this was a copy of the plat, but it clearly shows the property line going to what used to be the start of the LME. In other words, it is owned by somebody else. I want to see that on the plat.
Yeah, I guess to the extent that the lake tract is a lake tract, the top, the LME starts 20 feet from control. And from 20 feet to control to the edge of that track is part of the piece of ownership now, after 2014 change.
It's becoming a LME, it's actually an easement.
But it's part, it's part of the lake tract.
Part of the lake tract.
And so if the lake tract is deeded to the district, then we maintain all the property we own.
Yes, sir. Yes, you are correct.
Is that retroactive?
No.
No, it's based on the plat, I think.
Just on the plat.
It's based on the plat. It's not retroactive.
Just on the, just on the development since 2013.
Unless, no, it's not retroactive. It's anything development from 2013 on forward. Now, if you want to go to each individual property owner and ask them to dedicate to the CDD the rear 20 feet, you can replant the property.
I don't think that. I don't think I'm going to do that.
Yeah, just letting you know.
Charge it up, say, oh, you know, we're bringing this out.
Something that you can do.
That would be a lawyer's relief, that.
Okay, that, thanks for bringing that up. I was not aware of that. Because we've got several developments that have occurred.
Any changes, and I don't know if I'm able to interject, but any changes that you require to your pond or your lateral act, I would definitely encourage you to make sure that you're still in compliance with the Land Development Code and your Gateway PUD, because that's the only thing that the county will require you to do. So you may have a requirement within your Gateway Code to have, just take a number out of the thin air, 50% required laterals within your lake. That's not what the county requires. It's not in codified with the county. So when development order comes in, that is not what we will require with the county, even though the Gateway CDD requires that. So keep in mind that. And again, the Gateway CDD may own the lake track at the end of the day, but what, for example Hampton Park, that was all WCI Lennar that owned that track. Lennar was the one that pulled the development order on that track. And again, they're pulling a development order, and they may have some documentation, some legal action between third party, but what the county requires is the minimum requirements in Land Development Code. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Certainly clarify that.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that, you know, if you're looking at, for example, and I'm just, if you're looking at all, oh, you want to change your lake bank slopes to two to one. The county will not allow that, even though you are putting the lake bank slopes steeper. The maximum today, if you come in, is six to one. So you need to, even if you're going to go steeper, the county won't approve that.
But if we're rehabilitating, we only have to return it to the original DO of 41.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's what we're doing.
And that's what I said, that the minimum requirements in majority of Gateway is the minimum is four to one. But you have the new stuff, which is six to one.
I, I would like to see the, the lateral standards updated with the addendum, because for one thing, this addendum is when the development order is silent, and in Hampton Park, it certainly isn't silent, so this, this addendum would not even address what's being requested.
What would be nice, Margaret, and I've asked, said it for years, what we really need is a schedule of all 130 ponds that we've got, and with it...
So, calling the meeting back to Water Act, time 4:31, and I will once again start the regular meeting with a pledge of allegiance, because I've been asked to do that previously, so...
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And a quick roll call again, since it's a regular meeting. District attorney Tony Pierce is present, Supervisor Tinkle's present, Supervisor Banks, Supervisor Feinberg, Supervisor Guy, Supervisor Clarity are all present. District manager Chris Schumaker is present, and Stephen Bloom from Infomarc, their CPA, has joined the meeting.
He's got 15 minutes to make up.
And the first thing is, public comment?
I have two cards, and I did have Avery Deming on the honor to talk about the lateral workshop, but I guess he's left. So the only other card we have is Warren Davies, Stone Valley Loop, notifications and storage facility.
Good afternoon, board and Madam Chairman. At the last meeting, a gentleman spoke about touch bases on not being able to locate some information, and then discussed a little bit about this storage park that is being proposed. I'd like to cover both of those as briefly as I can. It's hard for a organization, a group like this, to provide information to the community on what's occurring within the community or what's occurring within the board. A lot of things occur here that are costing money, but people don't know about it. You ask them about it, they don't know. One of the problems, and only one way that the board can really do this, is through the website. And currently, the website is lacking quite a bit. Best way for people, without having to go through the whole video portion where you can find them, is to go through the minutes. But if you go back through the website, the minutes aren't there after October 4 of So it behooves people to know this. I think in my discussions with people concerning the storage park, which I'm going to address here in a few seconds, is that they don't know about it. They didn't realize it. This, this has been in process for almost two and a half years. September 1 of 2016 was when it was approved to move forward, to move the story from here out to the dog park, because they were going to do a building possibly here. There's no real comments, just a little paragraph that said, "Well, we're going to build here, we're going to have to move this out here," and that was the only thing. It was a move to have Tetra Tech do a study, to do this, et cetera. Two and a half years later, we have a second proposal. The first one failed, apparently by the county couldn't get permits. But it comes down to $600,000 for 85 spots of various sizes. That's $7100 per spot. That is a lot of money for everyone in Gateway to pay. Everyone would be assessed the amount, not just the 85 people, the 1 percent. We always hear about the 1 percent. The law of 1 percent has, uh, boats and trailers and whatever to store. We can't do everything for everybody in this particular aspect of it. The, uh, area, the cost is, is extreme for everybody to pay. If a payment could be done, whether it be one of the three ways that's listed in the I O C from Michael Kraft, if one of those could incorporate using the funds that people are paying to pay for it, would be a lot easier to, to take. Right now, HOA fees are going up, HOA assessments are going up, the C D D assessment's going up, uh, everybody's assessments, everything is going up. The C D D assessment will again, will go up next year because we borrowed more money on the $20 million, so that will increase it. And then, then it comes down to why should roughly 4,500 residents have to pay for 85 people's spaces? And those spaces would be sucked up right now. Because we've got 20 over here and last count, they had about 90 people wanting to get in. And they, they, I don't know how long they've been there, but they, it's been a while, I don't know how many will, will take it. So it comes down to, is this something really feasible for the board to do? We have all these other things going on and if you sit and listen to the meeting and if you can get to the meeting, you find out we've got 20 million going for lakes, we have so much more going for sewage cleanup, all these stuff going out, and we're borrowing all this money. So why should we have to borrow money to pay for spots for somebody else? A very small minority of people to do that. The, uh, the cost, and, and I see you'll talk a little bit about the cost, I'm sure because it's in the background. Currently, we charge $2.50 per foot, the size of the vehicle. So in all those things here, the, a space 60 feet long is going to cost $150 a month. That is an extremely low fee for this type of storage. I talked with storages.com, which has hundreds of facilities around the country, they have plenty in Florida itself, and they don't cover everybody. And a space 30 foot long would go for somewhere between $195 and $400 a foot, a month, I should say. So that, again, based on how much they take. And that's, again, based on where, where it would be at. That's why there's such a, a big difference in it. But I think that the, I'd like to see the board take a hard look at this, and if it's going to be a necessity to move forward on that, then find a funding mechanism that's not going to affect the assessment of everybody in Gateway. And just pretty much those folks that are using the facility. The people that use the dog park, they pay to use the dog park. People who use the soccer field, they pay to use the soccer field. And it, but it needs to be a good rate so people can understand this, and that people know what's going to go on. Don't come with a problem unless you have a solution. My solution would be if you've got $600,000 burning a hole in your pocket, I would prefer to see the board get with Lee County traffic and work on a traffic light at Griffin and West Lakes. They're becoming very dangerous, especially during work time. If you haven't gone through those intersections at work time, uh, don't try it. Uh, just coming over here this afternoon, I stopped in time before hitting a white station wagon inside.
You mean Gateway Boulevard.
Gateway Boulevard, I'm sorry. Yes, Gateway Boulevard.
I have to give you a 30-second warning.
Okay, okay, a 30-second warning.
He'll take it.
But, but I think that's the, uh, the thing. You know, if we're going to use, spend that kind of money, we need to make sure that it's going to be able to be used effectively by more people in Gateway and not just 1 percent.
Thank you, Warren.
Thank you.
Chris, a follow-up on his comments. How many, do we have a inventory or an identification of the number of people that use the pool?
Yeah, we have a...
How many families, how many families?
I could provide it to you. We, we do accounts every day. And also even the times, you know, is it morning, middle of the day?
Just to get a comparison, we're talking 85, just to what you're talking about, because I've been getting hit by that same, same issue in the community. Uh, we have 85 supposedly out of 6,200 ERUs that are going to benefit. My question is, the same thing might happen to the pool. Why do we need the pool?
We need the pool. We need the pool. I'm there, I'm there at the pool. There are 50 people who show up on Monday, Thursday and Saturday morning at, for one hour.
I'm not doing it for that, I'm not doing it for that basis. What I'm trying to do is, is that if we have 50 or 80 families that enjoy the pool out of 6,200, what's wrong with 85 enjoying this other year out of 6,200? That's why I've tried to put it in perspective. And the people that I have talked to said, "Close the pool too."
So, we'll move on to... I guess I need to open the public hearing on the stormwater facilities plan.
Yes, ma'am.
So, do I have a motion to do that? I'm motion to open the hearing.
I was like, move to a bigger room? Smaller room.
Smaller room. Okay. All right. All in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? All right. We're officially open.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is Tom Wainwright, I'm with Tetra Tech, I'm your district engineer. I'm going to apologize everybody in advance because I've got to leave here at 5:30 to pick up my kids today, so.
Hopefully, it's not like that.
This is going to take that long.
I wish you would've said five.
I'm not pulling traffic bad time.
I really hope it'll be done long before then. So, uh, I'll get started with this. Um, the, there's a couple items in here that are all basically the same thing. The very first item is a memorandum, basically just outlining the steps, um, of what it is that we're doing. So, we are completing a facilities plan in order to secure funding, future funding, financing for the next round of lake repairs. So, this year, we are currently under construction, completing all of the lakes under Phase One. This facilities plan covers all of the lakes in Phase Two. So that's what this is for.